And if the clerk could take the role, please.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner. Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
The first order of business is the election of the Chair of the County Board for the year 2021. I will now call for nominations for the election of the Chair of the County Board.
I nominate Commissioner Scott Schulte.
Commissioner Schulte has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. Is there a second to Commissioner Schulte's nomination?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of electing Commissioner Schulte as the County Board Chair for 2021 signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. I will now turn the meeting over to our new Chair, Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you Administrator Subaraja, and thank you to each and every one of you for your trust in me. And I promise to work very hard this year to continue to serve the public and you as best I can, and improve on some of my shortcomings from last year. So we'll do that together. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just commentary. I just wanted to state my appreciation of your leadership during COVID-19 and during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I couldn't do it without all of your support and certainly our incredible administration. We've come through the beginning of a very tumultuous time. We're not through it yet, but we'll continue to push through and make sure we finish on a high note, and have a great 2021, and we'll kick it off today. Next on our agenda is the election of the County Board Vice Chair for Program Year 2021. The floor is open for nominations. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Brassad.
There is a nomination on the floor for Commissioner Brassad for Vice Chair for 2021. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing no further nomination, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Commissioner Brassad for Vice Chair say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And that item passes. Congratulations, Commissioner Brassad. You are the Vice Chairman for 2021.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
Next on our agenda is Chair's remarks. I will look to Administrator Subaraja for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention that for the public's edification, if they go to our county website where they downloaded the agenda, they will find the handout for the committees, which are items 14 through items 21, will be posted there so that it is available, actually through item 23, so it is available to the public prior to the board.
Excellent. Thank you for that notice to the public. I have no other Chair's remarks, other than again to thank my colleagues for your hard work. Today's the day where we learn our committee assignments later in the meeting, and I appreciate your work on all the committees last year and all the changes that took place because of the virus, and how we handled our meetings, and we'll continue that way to start the year, and hopefully we'll evolve back to some in-person handshakes and conversations, and we can see each other's smiles not through masks. So with that, then, we'll move on to item seven. We'll consider Resolution 2021-1 relating to the establishment of rules and procedures for the Anoka County Board of Commissioners for 2021. Is there an offer of the resolution?
So offered.
The resolution has been offered by Commissioner Look and is on the floor before us. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So last year during this meeting, I did make a move for an amendment to allow public commentary to our full board meetings. Since that time, I mean, that did fail. Since that time, we've established a new policy that these kinds of items need to be workshopped. I still believe that we work for the public. The public should have a voice. However, with our new policy, that it needs to be workshopped and then a consensus of support before it's brought to the full board for the agenda. I will own that I regret I did not put that on time for the December workshop of 2020, but I do want you and the public to know that I do plan to bring this forward to a workshop agenda where we can discuss this and flesh this out. And again, I'm hoping for 2021 that we can all figure out a way to allow public commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comments? Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too supported Commissioner Meisner's last resolution or ideas last year for that, and I'm glad we're going to be having some conversations sometime during the upcoming year in workshops. There's a number of different things that we could possibly do, as I looked around at different counties, on what they were doing during the pandemic, and a number of them had started up having people send questions via the internet before the board meetings and things like that. So there's some other options that we might have, but I'm looking forward to the option or the opportunity to talk about that coming up in upcoming workshops. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. Further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That resolution is adopted. Next, we'll consider Resolution 2021-2 relating to the designation of public meeting notice facility. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Brassad and is before us. Is there further comments? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That resolution is adopted. Next, we'll consider Resolution 2021-3, a resolution identifying Anoka County local officials. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And that will pass unanimously. The resolution is adopted. Next, we'll consider Resolution 2021-4, a resolution establishing County Board of Appeal and Equalization. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2021-4.
There is a resolution before us, offered by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say no, and that passes unanimously. Next, we'll consider Resolution 2021-5, a resolution appointing hearing officers. Is there an offer of the resolution?
Offered.
The resolution has been offered by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And that will pass unanimously. Next, we'll consider Resolution 2021-6, a resolution concerning employer contribution toward medical insurance coverage for retirees. Is there an offer of that resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no, and that will pass unanimously. Next, item 13, we'll consider Resolution 2021-7, a resolution awarding the bid for publication of the Anoka County Financial Statement and the official proceedings of the Anoka County Board. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Gamache. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye. And that item passes. Next, we are going to move on to item 14 through 23. These are all of the handout that was just handed to you.
Thank you.
And there should be no surprises here. We've had some discussions individually to understand where we wanted to serve and where we could best serve our public. So we will take item 14 first. Let me get to my page here, which is recommended county board appointments. We have 14A and B. I'm going to read through these quickly, just so the public knows where and how we serve. Anoka County Blaine Airport Joint Powers Board, that will be Commissioner Reiner and Commissioner Look. Commissioner Reiner, as the new airport committee chairperson, will be the co-chair of that committee, and then Commissioner Look, as the Chair of Finance, will also serve on that committee. Coon Creek Watershed District Citizen Advisory Committee will be Joe McPherson. Metro GIS Policy Board, Commissioner Gamache. Metro Alliance for Healthy Families Governing Board will be Commissioner Meisner with Commissioner Gamache as an alternate. We have the Metropolitan Emergency Services Board, where Commissioner Gamache and Meisner will both serve, and then the Metropolitan Emergency Services Board Executive Committee will be Commissioner Gamache. The Metropolitan Mosquito Control District Board will be Commissioner West, Commissioner Reiner, and myself. Metropolitan Mosquito Control District Exec Board will be Commissioner West. Minnesota Community Health Service Advisory Committee, Commissioner Meisner. Janelle Hubbard will be the alternate there. North Trunk Highway 65 Corridor Coalition, which is a JPA, will be Commissioner Brassad with Commissioner West as an alternate. And the Regional Haulers Licensing Board is Commissioner Look with Commissioner Gamache as the alternate. Utilities Transmission Issues, the designated liaison, will be our own Joel McPherson. And then item B is recommended county board nominations. Metropolitan Council Transportation Advisory Board will be Commissioner Look, with myself serving as the alternate, and then the MELSA Metronet, Commissioner West will serve there. I think we'll take all these items together, 14 through 23, as one vote, but we'll now move on to item 15 quickly. Our Airport Committee, which is an internal county committee, which meets very infrequently only as needed, and that will be Commissioner Reiner as Chair, Commissioner West as Vice Chair, and Commissioner Meisner. The Board of Oversight of Court Appointed Attorneys will be Commissioner Brassad and myself. The Children and Family Council Governing Board is going to be Commissioner Reiner. Community Corrections Advisory Board will be Commissioner Gamache, Meisner, and Commissioner Reiner will serve as the alternate there. Community Health Advisory Committee is Commissioner Meisner. Facilities Management and Construction Subcommittee, which is a subcommittee of the Finance and Capital Improvements Committee, will be Commissioner Look and myself. Finance and Capital Improvements Committee will be Commissioner Look as Chair, Brassad Vice Chair, Gamache and myself. Greater Metropolitan Workforce Council, I will be serving on that. That particular council has collapsed, I think is the best term to put. They do talk about reconvening it in some form or fashion. If they do, I will be a representative to that, but currently there is no council to be a member of. The Human Services Committee, we will have a new chairman there in Commissioner Reiner. Commissioner West will be Vice Chair, and Commissioner Brassad and Meisner will likewise serve on that committee. Information Technology Committee, or IT, Commissioner Gamache will continue to chair that committee with Commissioner Reiner as Vice Chair and Commissioner Meisner. Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee, Commissioner Brassad will chair that with Commissioner West as Vice Chair and Commissioner Meisner serving there as well. Joint Law Enforcement Council, Commissioner Brassad and Schulte will continue there. Law Library Board of Trustees, Commissioner Meisner with Commissioner Reiner as an alternate there. Law, excuse me, Library Board Liaison, and this term is concurrent with MELSA, will be Commissioner West on the Library Board with Commissioner Reiner as the alternate. The Management Committee will be served by Commissioner West as Chair, Commissioner Brassad as Vice Chair, Commissioner Reiner and myself. Continuing on, Parks Committee, we will have a chairman in Commissioner Gamache. Commissioner Reiner will serve as Vice Chair, and Commissioner West will serve on that committee. Property Records and Taxation, we will continue with Commissioner Meisner as Chair, Commissioner Gamache as Vice Chair, and Commissioner Reiner. Public Safety Committee will have Commissioner Brassad as Chair, myself as Vice Chair, and Commissioner West. Solid Waste Abatement Advisory Team, Commissioner Look will facilitate that group with Colleen Sinclair from Coon Rapids as the Associate Facilitator. And the Waste Haulers Roundtable Group will be facilitated by Commissioner Look. Transportation Committee will be chaired by myself with Commissioner Look as Vice Chair and Commissioner West and Commissioner Brassad. And the Workforce Development Board will continue with Commissioner Meisner and myself. That's item 15. We'll move on to item 16, which is appointments by the County Board Chair to special topics. And those will be Special Topics Committee, the Anoka County Blaine Airport Advisory Commission. This is different than the other two airport committees that we've already talked about. This is more of a local community stakeholder group that deals with noise issues and other concerns, and Commissioner Reiner will also lead us in that category. Benefits and Compensation, Commissioner West will chair that with Commissioner Brassad working with her. East Central Regional Juvenile Center Advisory Board, formerly the Juvenile Center Advisory Board, will be Commissioner Reiner. Commissioner Meisner will be the alternate, and then Dylan Warington will be an additional alternate. Historical Society Liaison will be Commissioner Reiner. Investment Review Committee will be myself, Administrator Subaraja and Corey Camp from Finance and Central Services. Continuing on, the Midwest Regional Forensics Laboratory Advisory Board will be Commissioner Brassad as the Public Safety Chair, and then myself as an alternate. Sheriff Stewart will chair that committee with Deputy Hallwig and Facility Supervisor. Next is the Regional Economic Development Executive Committee, also known as AC RED. That'll be myself, Commissioner Brassad, Administrator Subaraja, and Chakal Hyder. Web Oversight Committee will be Commissioner Gamache and Dee Goodman. And then the lead commissioner in the following topic areas will be, for aging, Commissioner Reiner. Americans with Disabilities Act, Commissioner Meisner. Diversity and Inclusion or Cultural, also Commissioner Meisner. Elections, reapportionment, and voter registration, myself. Insurance and Retirement, myself. Maps, Commissioner Reiner. Pay Equity, Commissioner West. Pipeline Safety Legislation, Commissioner Reiner. Real Estate, Commissioner Gamache. Item 17, and I'm quickly realizing why we probably didn't read these off.
I think it's good.
Item 17, then, is the recommended county board appointments for other community boards, committees, and boards. For Ag Preservation Credit, ad hoc committee will be Commissioner Look and Commissioner Brassad. Anoka County Extension Committee will be Commissioner Look, Commissioner Reiner, and Andy Soltbet as a staff position. And then the Internal Audit Committee will be the County Board Chairperson, myself, Commissioner Look, the County Administrator, and Bob Thistle and Brian Page as citizen representatives. Next, item 18 is to the county board appointments to the Anoka County Regional Rail Authority for the remainder of the year, and that will be all seven county commissioners will be appointed to the Regional Rail Authority. Next, item 19 is Anoka County Community Consortiums, and one is the Central Centennial Community Network and Centennial Community Services, and that will be Commissioner Reiner. East Central Creating Community will be Commissioner West, and the Northwest Anoka County Community Consortium or Youth First, Community of Promise, and that will be Commissioner Look with Commissioner Gamache as an alternate, and Gail Alexander and Justin Weller. Next, item 20 is to recommend the county board appointment or nominations to the Association of Minnesota Counties or AMC. We have 10 delegates there. It will be the seven commissioners, the county administrator, the transportation division manager, and the human services division manager. Those will all be voting delegates at District 10 for the Association of Minnesota Counties. For the AMC Board of Directors, Commissioner West will be a director with Commissioner Brassad an alternate. For the public certification, I will continue to serve on that board as the past president, and then also as the Business and Partnership Committee Chairman, I will serve on that board until I'm no longer that chairman. And then item C is AMC District 10 Executive Committee. That again will be Commissioner West with Commissioner Brassad as an alternate. Next is appointments to AMC Policy Committees. Environment and Natural Resources will be Commissioner Gamache. General Government will be Commissioner West. Health and Human Services will be Commissioner Meisner and Commissioner Reiner. Public Safety will be Commissioner Brassad, and Commissioner Look and myself will serve on transportation and infrastructure. This is when we do have AMC conferences, the opportunity to go to those meetings and weigh in from Anoka County's perspective on these subject areas, or absent in-person meetings, we certainly have the ability to meet via Zoom with AMC to make sure Anoka County's priorities are protected within the state association. Next, we'll move on to 21, which is the National Association of Counties Board Appointments. Delegates this year will be myself. First alternate will be Commissioner West. Second alternate will be Commissioner Gamache. This is just our voting privileges for Anoka County at NACO events or virtual events. And then for informational purposes, terms for the HRA for the trustees are before you. A number will be up in 20, two will be up in 2022, one will be up in 2023, and the other four will be up in 2024. Canvassing Board for this year will be unchanged from last year. It'll be myself, Commissioner Meisner, and Commissioner Gamache will be the alternate. And that covers item 14 through 23. Is, do we need a motion, or is this a resolution?
A motion.
We'll need a motion for this. Is there a motion to approve item 14 through 23?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Look and a second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner, then Commissioner Reiner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, I do want to thank you personally for taking time to discuss my goals and thoughts about this, and I know you were kind of joking earlier about, gosh, now I know I normally don't read this out loud, but I do want to say that I think it was really great that you did. It's great to inform the public, and then as well as just to let the public know all of the work that goes on here, because clearly it's a lot. So I encourage you to do this every year, even though it was a bit long, but it's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, just a quick question on 22. It's the Anoka County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And I was just wondering if I could get some clarity on how the expiring terms are established.
I'm the Chair of the HRA, and I wish I could answer that. I think it was based on original elections and appointments to that HRA. And then it just is a rolling term where it is odd that one, two of them are 22 and one is 23, and then the others are 24. There is, it's probably something to do with timing with a special election, like you just went through, is my guess. Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Actually, I do have a follow-up question about that same item. I assumed it was based on elections, but for example, I am up in 2024. However, who knows if I will actually be a county commissioner, because my term ends in 2022. So I assume that it's just that slot for the commissioner's seat that kind of owns that for HRA.
I would suggest it's a little different than the Regional Rail Authority in that this is statutorily, we have to be appointed to this board, and it is not coterminous with your assignment or your election certificate to the county board. This is a completely separate body that you are being appointed to.
So you keep showing up even if you're not a county.
And I will tell you before, earlier in my tenure here, these were not county commissioners on the HRA. A number of them were people from the public that were on. I believe Don Fendell was from your district, who served at Commissioner Cordyak's behest. So I think it can happen regularly where it's not county board members. Therefore, it is not necessarily coterminous with your county board election, if that helps at all.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just a little, I guess, challenge about that, because I guess I would say that it still must be the unwritten policy or understanding, because again, I don't see anyone who's not a county commissioner on the HRA, so.
It is controlled by statute. I'm going to let the expert speak to it, but I will tell you that we still, at this point, it wouldn't have to be county commissioners on the HRA. We still could appoint people that are not members of the board.
So technically, we could do that.
It was my thought and a number of, a thought of a number of us, that if we have taxing authority, you should have an election certificate. That was our belief, and that's why we decided to ask county commissioners to please serve in that role as opposed to appointing a citizen who's not elected to that taxing authority. I will turn to Dee Goodman, our deputy county administrator and kind of the boss of the HRA, sort of, to tell us.
Sort of, kind of. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Dee Goodman, Assistant Executive Director for the HRA. Chair Schulte said it right in that we used to have trustees. We've left it as trustees, but the decision was made to have it so the trustees were all going to be commissioners and not part commissioners and part citizens. With that, I believe it is a rolling, so it doesn't really go on Mandy Meisner, the commissioner. It goes on your commissioner's seat, and then it rolls from there. And so we adjust every year in order to take and accommodate that.
Good question, Commissioner Reiner and Commissioner Meisner. Are there any further, is there any further discussion on items 14 through 23? I will just take a moment just to thank all of you for your willingness to do this heavy lift. I mean, we've done some shifting this year, and some people have a little more work than they've had in the past, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that. That you're willing to put in the time to do this job properly, and it makes my job a little bit easier. And organizing this list was a little bit time-consuming, but it was easy when I was working with you, and you're all willing to do as you were asked, and we'll continue to evolve this process every year to find it to your liking as best we can. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Terrific. That passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 24 to consider Resolution 2021-8 relating to the appointment of the County Agricultural Inspector. Is there a offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Brassad and is before us. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Just a question. How long has Glenn Fuchs been appointed this?
I would guess it's been about five years or so. Prior to that, I think, I do believe our weed inspector was Commissioner Cordyak, if I remember right. So this, it's been about five years or so.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes. Next, we will look for item 25, Committee Appointments. We'll consider appointing Andover Mayor Sherri Bukala and appointing Oak Grove Mayor Dan Dennow to the Joint Law Enforcement Council for a one-year term expiring January of 2022, as recommended by Sheriff Stewart pursuant to Joint Law Enforcement Council Agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gamache. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gamache, then Commissioner Brassad.
I just had a quick question, and actually, I'll let Commissioner Brassad go first, because mine is really going back to something that was in our thing related to the joint law enforcement. I just had a quick question, so.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Gamache. Andover Mayor, oh, that is Sherri Bukala. Never mind. It was getting a little mixed up. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed when we were looking at the joint law enforcement, there was something on there about expiration, and I just wanted to get a clarification of exactly what that was, and it said something to the effect of, let me get back there. Okay, where was it?
I would hope you could, but I don't recall anything expiring on joint law enforcement. I would hope you could, but I don't recall anything expiring on joint law enforcement.
It was like in, okay, what the heck was I looking at? All right, I'm almost back, I think. All right, I'll get back to you later. We can vote.
All right, we will, we have a motion before us to appoint Sherri Bukala and Dan Dennel to the Joint Law Enforcement Council for a one-year term.
Schulte.
Teresa.
On the language, were you thinking the contract good till terminated for the joint law enforcement?
Yeah, I think that was it. And I wasn't sure exactly what that meant, because if that was always there, or is it coming up?
Could the question be restated? I'm not understanding it.
It's, I still haven't found it, how it's phrased. What page is that on?
It is on the second page of the handout, the second page of the list. About three-fourths of the way down.
Right under intergovernmental. Three-quarters of the way down the page. Joint Law Enforcement Council, Contract 2008-0279, Contract Good Till Terminated.
And I wasn't sure if we've always had that there, and apparently we probably have, and I wasn't sure if that was something new when we were looking at the termination was coming up, their date was set or whatever. So, okay, it's always been there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Attorney Plumb.
Chairman of the Board, I think what that refers to is the Joint Law Enforcement Council put in a set of rules, a procedure in 2008, and in that set of rules, I think it laid out the appointments of various commissioners and various city council people. So I think when we refer to it as contract, it probably is just really referring to the Joint Law Enforcement Council's rules of procedure that was adopted in 2008. Okay? I don't know if that clarifies for you, Commissioner Gamache, or not, but.
So it's essentially saying that Commissioner Brassad and I are the appointees to that board, as long as that contract provision stays in place, that two county commissioners are a member of Joint Law Enforcement Council.
Correct.
Terrific. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. We do have that motion before us for the mayors of both Oak Grove and Andover to Joint Law Enforcement Council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? We'll move on to 25B. Consider reappointing county attorney Tony Palumbo as the county board representative on the Fogarty Ice Arena Board of Directors for 2021 pursuant to real property lease agreement contract 2008-0151. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Brassad and a second by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Just a commentary about this facility. I do know that it was in dire straits recently, but it sounds like that they are able to be stable at least for the next quarter, couple of months. So I was really pleased to hear that. That was my only commentary about Fogarty Arena. Thank you.
Very good, and thank you, Attorney Plumb, for serving there, and if you have any comments, it was a good time.
Just for the edification, maybe of the new members of the board, why I'm appointed on behalf of the county, maybe it's probably a good understanding. Originally, when Fogarty Ice Arena, which is a private arena, by the way, not connected to the government in any way, was first given a couple hundred thousand dollars by Anoka County back in 1981, and part of that grant was a reversionary clause that said if the Fogarty Arena was not used for youth sports, it would revert back to the county. The county board along the way had made a decision, they did not want to be in the ice arena business. So before I was elected as an assistant county attorney, I negotiated with Fogarty Ice Arena to eliminate that clause from the lease. There was a board member by the name of Joseph Quinn, who had been a representative and a judge here in the county, and Judge Quinn insisted that the county have an appointee to the Fogarty Ice Arena Board if he would agree to remove the reversionary clause. So I have been appointed since that time, and there's also an appointment from the City of Blaine Council. So there are two government appointees that are made by the respective bodies that sit on that particular board. There are also four members of the Blaine Youth Hockey Association that sit on the board, and four members of the Spring Lake Park Youth Hockey Association, plus an additional member from the curling board. So the reason why this board appoints is because of negotiations that occurred some 12 or 13 years ago to remove the reversionary clause. So I just thought the board would probably want to know why, you know, a county member is, or somebody's appointed by this board, so.
Thank you, Attorney Plumb. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Congratulations, Attorney Plumb. And for informational purposes, we will also be reappointing the county attorney Tony Palumbo to the Anoka Technical College General Advisory Committee for a term ending on June 30th of 2021. So that's a half a year appointment. So I happen to serve on that committee with you, I believe, but I'm not appointed by this board, I'm just there for some reason. So that does conclude our statutory organizational meeting. If there's nothing else to come before the board, I will declare us adjourned.